And it is officially six thirty and we have all commissioners here. So when you are ready to begin.
Perfect, great. I call the meeting to planning commission meeting of the city of American Canyon, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order six thirty. Nicole, get a little coffee?
Yes, excuse me, Commissioner Navarro.
Here.
Commissioner Goff. Vice Chair Wong.
Present.
Chair Malari.
Here.
And Commissioner Altman is absent this evening.
Okay. Trying to pull up the agenda which I had. Okay, now the session section is open for us to do the pledge of allegiance. You guys can come along with me and say a pledge of allegiance. That's great. Thank you. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And this time now is opening up for public comment. It's reserved for members of the public to address the city of American Canyon of any interests that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Nicole, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have Beth Marcus. Ms. Marcus, I'm going to unmute you. Or ask you to unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say early happy Thanksgiving to you and the best of luck to you. Fantastic that you've got, what, seventeen, eighteen people who have applied for your planning commission? That's outstanding. It's good to see that our community is really out there and really wanting to get a part of what you're doing. And thank you for those of you who will be leaving for all your service. And again, just congratulations on getting so many applicants.
Okay, and now we have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Justin, please unmute yourself.
Well, good Amy and happy day, Annie, very. This is our last day, me. You just want to shout out, I think, how somebody did call me for my more update at the three house or five house at Russell Karen Donmore. And if I see Erica, the happy wish to happy day, can you do all?
Right. Um. And let's see, does anybody else have any public comment on anything that is not on the agenda? Justin, you just raised your hand again.
Okay.
No, okay. All right. Again, any public comment for anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Going once? Twice? I believe that is the end of, or nobody else has any public comment for non-agendized items.
Great, thank you. Any agenda changes? Director Cooper.
Thank you, Chair Malari. We have no agenda changes tonight.
Okay, all right. Moving on to the consent calendar. Looking for a recommendation to approve the minutes of our September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
I'll second.
Roll coffee?
Yes, Commissioner Navarro.
I.
Commissioner Goff.
I.
Commissioner Altman is absent. Vice Chair Wong.
I.
And Chair Malari.
I. Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. Next, on the consent calendar is the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three finding commission meeting calendar. Commissioner Goff?
Yeah, I was reviewing those dates and I have a question on the February date. It's listed as the twenty-second, which is a Wednesday. Our meetings are generally on Thursdays. I'm wondering if that should be the twenty-third.
It should be the twenty-third and I will amend that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Okay, looking to get an approval for the agenda of the planning commission calendar dates for twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you. Nicole, will copy?
Yes, Commissioner Goff.
I.
Commissioner Navarro.
I.
Commissioner Altman is absent. Vice Chair Wong.
I.
And Chair Malari.
I. Perfect. All right. So moving on down to the public hearings, the Giovinoni Logistics Center Warehouse Project. And I believe we have a presentation.
Thank you, Chair Malari and Planning Commission. I'm Brent Cooper, Community Development Director. And we're pleased to present the Giovinoni Logistics Center. This project is a large industrial project, two hundred and eight acres, very similar to the Napa Logistics Park, just to the north of that. Let's see, there are two people I see in attendees. Nicole, if you could promote them to panelist. The Grant Gruber and Mary Bean, they're our EIR consultants for this project. I know they're part of the presentation.
Okay, I am doing that right now.
On the planning commission, last summer, reviewed the environmental impact report for this project. While it was during the public comment period, after that it closed. We received the comments and prepared responses to them. And they were sent out on November fourth and a modification with additional information on November eleventh. The standard is required is ten days before the EIR is certified, which would occur by the city council. So we're well ahead of schedule there. Do apologize, the planning commission packet inadvertently didn't include the resolution to approve and recommend approval of the environment impact report. All of the substantial information is in the packet. That oversight was mine. And I have nothing to say than I'm really sorry it wasn't in the packet. I did email it to the planning commissioners and our ER consultants. Just before this meeting, I know that we had some back and forth to refine it. And and so it's largely a documentation referencing the information that was included in the packet. Happy to screen share if that's appropriate at the right time. The our ER consultant first carbon has a presentation on the environment impact report process and outcomes. And the applicant has a presentation to describe the project. Following that, staff will be available for questions. This is a public hearing. And so of course, there are people probably in the attendees that would like to speak as well. And with that, if it's ready to go, I'm going to turn it over to, I see Grant's face. So I'm in trouble with Brad, although I see Mary is also here, also from First Carbon Solutions. And I do also want to just point out, of course, we always have our city attorney, which I appreciate very much. And but we don't always get the public works director. So very happy to have Erica here as well. And so I think we're well attended. So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. And I guess, Grant, if you can share your screen, are you the one with the presentation that's available?
Brett, this is Joe Leviage with Buzz Oats. We have an R R end and we can change the slides for for Grant.
So we've passed the first, hi, this is Jeff Lenhart with RMW. I'm the architect of the project. So happy to be in front of you tonight. We're going to do our best to navigate the technology here. It sounds like you can already hear us. So we're past the first hurdle. I'm going to try and share a screen and see if this works. So bear with me for a second while I get this going. Can you guys see that? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Great.
Great. Grant, would you like to take us?
Can Grant hear us?
Grant, I can't tell if you're talking, but we can't hear you.
Grant, I've asked you to unmute yourself.
We've lost his video on our end as well.
It looks like his screen's just gone blank because according to my screen, he's showing video.
Should we give him a moment?
He's coming back. Grant, you here now?
And this, this is Mary. If sorry, if if Grant doesn't get back on, then I can walk through the.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, I think my my video is screwing up. So if we can start the presentation.
No worries. Here we go. Grant, can you see that?
Yes, I can.
Fantastic. I think we're good to go. You let me know when you want to advance.
Let's advance. Well, good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission. I'm Grant Gruber. I'm with FCS, where the cities, the consultant for the environmental impact report. I'm joined by Mary Bean, who you just heard from. So we're just going to give you a basic rundown through the project and then we'll talk about the environmental review. So the site is two hundred and eight acres. It's between Green Island Road and Napa Logistics Park. It's flat. It's got grassy vegetation and a reach of no name creek runs through the northern portion of the site. It is in the American Canyon City limits. It's been there since two thousand and five. It's been designated industrial by both the general plan and zoning ordinance. And it's also within the Napa County Airport Land use compatibility plan boundaries. Continue. That scenario, so just orient yourself. You got the airport to the north. You got the railroad line to the west. You have Napa Logistics Park, which in that photo is is early phases of it. It's obviously been built out more. You got twenty-nine to the east. Continue. So Buzz Oats is proposing to develop two point four million square feet of logistics center uses on the site. Phase one is roughly ninety-five acres. Two high key warehouses, roughly four hundred and seventy thousand square feet, the other of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet. That would be developed east of Devlin Road. And phase two, which is up around one hundred and thirteen acres, would be up to one point three million square feet. And vehicular access would come from both Green Island Road and the, actually now it's the existing Devlin Road extension. And that's the site plan. And again, that's phase one to the right. The reason that is laid out is because the applicant has actually developed, we've evaluated it as a project level. The reason you don't see anything on the left side is because that is still conceptual. Appkin is going to base the layout based on things such as resource agency permitting requirements and whatnot. Continuing. So the California Environmental Quality Act, known as CEQA, applies to projects that require discretionary approval from state or local agencies. So in this case, the city of American Canyon, because the applicant has filed an application with the city of American Canyon, is the lead agency and has overseen the preparation of an environmental impact report. So give you a little background about EIRs. It is the highest level of CEQA review. It is an impartial informational document. It does not advocate for the project one way or another. And it evaluates the project as proposed. In other words, it represents the worst case scenario in terms of environmental impacts. And I make that point because, for instance, Napa Logistics to the north evaluated a lot more square footage than was actually entitled and actually ends up getting developed. And then it also sets forth mitigation measures to reduce the severity of potentially significant impacts. So how did we get here? Process began all the way back in January of two thousand and twenty-one with the notice of preparation. This is the very first document in the whole process. It announces that the city was embarking on the preparation of an EIR. February third, we held a virtual scoping meeting. On February tenth of two thousand and twenty-one, the NOP review period closed. Then fast forward to May of this year, the draft EIR was issued for public review. June twenty-third, before this very body, we also held a virtual public meeting on the draft EIR where we solicited public input about what was contained in the document. And then finally, the public review period closed on July twentieth of this year, and it ends up being a total of sixty-two days. Now, I should note that state law only requires forty-five days, so we exceeded that by seventeen days. On Halloween, the final EIR was released, and tonight we're having the planning commission. So to give you some big picture context, this part of American Canyon has seen a lot of development activity. And me personally and my company, we were involved in the preparation and the ultimate certification of these EIRs for Napa Logistics Park Phase Two, Napa Airport Corporate Center and the Broadway District specifically. And so based on this past history, we know, coming into this, there would be about five issues we'd have to address. And air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, you know, biological resources, specifically wetlands, compatibility with the Napa County Airport, traffic, especially on twenty-nine, and finally, water supply. So the draft EIR, which is a fairly thick document, we evaluated thirteen topical issues in depth. And again, some of the same issues I just mentioned. The EIR set forth thirty-two mitigation measures. I'll just hit some of the highlights. Best management practices for air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, no net loss of wetlands, wildlife attractant management plan. That's for the airport to ensure that, you know, bird strikes are not being created. And noise abatement during construction. We also looked at three project alternatives. So what we found was the project would result in two significant unavoidable air quality impacts. First is conflicts with the air quality management plan. And that's tied to the next one, which is cumulative criteria polluting impact. So because anytime you develop, you know, a certain amount of acreage, especially once you get into the millions of square feet, two point four million square feet, it just is inevitable, you're going to have significant air quality impacts, just because of how the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has set its thresholds. And because you have a significant impact with exceeding thresholds, that then automatically triggers an impact with their quality management. By no means this is not unexpected. In fact, we had the same conclusions in those other EIRs I mentioned, Napa Logistics, Napa Airport Corporate Center and Broadway District. The good news is all other impacts we evaluated in that EIR are less than significant and do not require or are less than significant with mitigation or less than significant and did not require mitigation. So during the sixty-two day public review period, first off, we will start off at the June twenty-third planning commission. There are five verbal comments received, including three from planning commissioners. Then, if you're talking written comments, we had two from public agencies, one written comment from a tribal organization, and finally, three written comments from private parties. And so just to hit the highlights here, there are a lot of topics, but the ones that were reoccurring that came up a lot, Swenson Hawk. Finally, a new, the need for a new North Fire Station, vehicle miles traveled. And lastly, air quality mitigation. And I'm going to talk about each one of these topics on the next couple of slides. So Swenson Hawk, just to give you a little background about the species, it was very much in peril circa the late nineteen seventies, early eighties. It has historically been in the central valley. But there is a small population in Southern Napa County. So we've known about the Swenson Hawk and its potential, you know, to occur in American Canyon for a number of years. I would just point out that this site has been the most biologically studied site in American Canyon in the past five years. Several different biologists, including folks from different firms, they're not, it's not just the same people. They've studied the site, all come back to the same conclusions. For the Swenson Hawk, this is a species that nests in trees. Even though we don't have any trees on the site, we still have pre-construction surveys as mitigation. That's nesting surveys. Then you also have the issue that the Swenson Hawk is a raptor, so it forages for its food. So amphibians, rodents, reptiles, other birds. Because the site provides suitable foraging habitat, we also consider that. Well, the issue is that the Swenson Hawk is a very adaptable species. And if you're going to require this site to mitigate for Swenson Hawk, you know, you'd pretty much have to require every site in American Canyon to mitigate, just because the species is so adaptable. So we concluded that this is unnecessary because there is so much available foraging habitat, especially in areas going to be preserved as open space in and around American Canyon. So moving on to the New North Fire Station. During the public review period, the American Canyon Fire Protection District submitted a letter saying that there's going to be a need for a new fire station. That being said, no sites have been selected from what I last heard. They're still doing a study as to what facility needs they have. Nonetheless, this applicant has entered into an agreement with the Fire Protection District to provide funding to cover operational issues with the site. And continuing to vehicle miles travel. VMT, as we call it VMT, this is a relatively new area CEQA, similar to greenhouse gas emissions from about fifteen years ago. It is this brand new area that has been evolving. So you get guidance that's all over the place. Some agencies have guidance, other agencies don't have guidance. When you don't have guidance, you end up in kind of this no man's land of trying to figure out what's the right thing to do. On top of that, warehouse projects, there's virtually nothing out there for them. So in the absence, and then on top of that, the Napa Solano traffic model has some limitations, specifically that trips can't go across county lines and whatnot. So in the absence, you know, of clear guidance of these limits with, you know, technology and whatnot, our traffic consultant, W Trans, they used the best available information and the best guidance to evaluate VMT impact. And so they were using information like San Jose, Sacramento, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, which is the agency that oversees CEQA, and said basically, what what makes the most sense for this type of project? And lastly, we would get to air quality mitigation. And we had two organizations that provided a lengthy laundry list of feasible mitigation measures. And so we went through each and every one of these proposed mitigation measures. And what we found was that, A, a lot of them were not necessary because, for instance, construction air quality emissions could be mitigated to a level of less than significant. And under CEQA, you don't need to do additional mitigation when you can get it to that level. Two, we already had it as a mitigation measure. Or three, they were just not feasible and rendered the project unbuildable. So we did though, take three mitigation measures proposed. And just to give you one example, one of them was posting signs in the loading docks advising truck drivers that the state has a law limiting diesel idling to five minutes or less. So we said, okay, fine, we'll play ball. And if you have something that's feasible and makes sense, we'll include it. Continuing. So now the applicant team will take over with the presentation, but looking ahead here, the city will open the public hearing to solicit verbal comments on the EIR. And then finally, planning commission will be acting as a recommend body to the city council regarding certification of the final. That concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Grant. Chair Malari, members of the planning commission, good evening. I'm Joe Leviage with Buzz Oats. We are the applicant and developer of the Giovinoni Logistics Center. And before we get into some of the project specifics, I just want to take a moment to thank staff for getting here tonight. We've been working at this for for over two years, and I know it's not a an easy lift. So thanks again, and we're looking forward to the presentation. So we could go. Next slide, please. So Buzz Oats, we're a vertically integrated real estate company. What does that mean? Why does that matter? We're not your average developer in that a lot of developers will take raw land, entitle it and sell it to somebody else. And that next person will come and build on a site. And then that next person will sell that, and then someone will buy that and manage it over the long term. We do all of that. And why that matters is when we look at a site, we're we're not looking at what the next one year, two years is going to bring. We're looking at this really on a fifty-plus year time horizon. We buy raw land and entitle it. We will install infrastructure in that land and surrounding area. We will act as a general contractor and build on that land. We will find high quality tenants to lease those buildings, and then we will manage those assets over the long term. So the commitment that we're making on this property with the Giovinoni family and right from the start under a ground lease, we're looking at a hundred year commitment to the city of American Canyon and ultimately this site. This is our fir- or second project in American Canyon, our first being a hundred Jim Oswald. And so generally speaking, I think that that you'll find that we do things the right way and we are we're not the typical developer that will take a piece of land and flip it. We go to next slide, please. A little bit about our company founded in nineteen fifty-one by Buzz Oats. And he was a war veteran that came back and started a key shop. And that key shop was was ANA Key Shop. And I think I maybe shared this last time. He was a smart businessman. The reason why he did that was that was going to be the first name in the phone book that you saw when you looked for a key shop. So that transformed into building supplies, then construction, then development. And seventy-five years later, we're a company with a hundred and one employees. Geographic location typically Northern California, Central Valley. We're doing projects in Northern Nevada. Have some holdings in El Paso, Texas, as well as Tucson, Arizona. Next slide, please. A little bit about kind of the portfolio. We have a mix of tenants. You know, two thirds are our national tenants and another third are regional and local tenants. We've built everything from a Starbucks drive-through all the way to a million square foot warehouse office projects. But this site is obviously industrial warehouse, and we think we're we're taking the project to another level and things that we just haven't seen in this in this space yet. Next slide, please. Just a few completed projects to give you a sense, kind of look and feel of what we do. Next slide. This project here was down in Lathrup, started out as a six hundred thousand square foot spec building, meaning speculative. We don't have tenants at the time. Ninety-five percent of what we do is on a speculative basis. We feel that we have a good sense of what the market desires, so we will take the risk and invest millions of dollars on both site improvements, construction. And what we're seeing now is is kind of the market gets going once you're under construction, right? We do build the suits for tenants, but once walls are going up, then tenants get interested. And that's what happened to this facility that we leased to Tesla. It started out as a spec building and then turned into a build-to-suit once we were under construction. Next slide, please. Similar to an Amazon facility, this is in Sacramento in Metro Air Park. This is our twelve hundred acre business park directly adjacent to the Sacramento International Airport. I think this was our first building in the park. This park took forty years to to make. Hopefully, the Giovinoni Logistics Center does not take that long. But we invested a hundred million dollars in infrastructure prior to to tilt in a wall. So again, it just shows our commitment in the long term to both an individual site, a park, and the communities in which we work in. Next slide, please. This is a local project in Vacaville, completed earlier this year. It's a local paper company and a two hundred and four thousand square foot building. Next slide, please. So the Giovinoni Logistics Center, we feel that from our design and the commitments that we're making to the city and the park, this is really the most environmentally sustainable logistics center in Napa County and Northern California. We feel what we're proposing here with this park, you're just not seeing yet in the market, and we are trying to future-proof the park, given that we are committed in the long term. And I'm going to go over a few things of what we are doing. Next slide, please. As you guys know, this is the largest infill opportunity in the City of American Canyon. I think this was first contemplated back in the nineteen eighty-six Napa Airport specific plan, the city annexed it in two thousand and five. And so we know that this warrants what is really setting the bar as to what these projects can be. And we feel that this is really a sustainability showcase project that the rest of the market can take as an example of how we can do these projects in a way that works for everyone. Next slide, please. We project that at build-out, the park will have over two thousand jobs. And again, we base that on a square-foot basis, but also kind of what we see developing millions of square feet and managing close to thirty million square feet of warehouse. Again, this is a big commitment that we're making to the city. We project over four hundred million dollars in private capital that we're going to be investing over the long term. This park isn't going to build out in a year, you know, we, we think it's probably going to be ten years or more. But again, when we look at the commitment that we're making today, plus the long term, we had an economic impact study conducted, and EPS out of Sacramento is projecting that in total Napa County economic impact with payroll and spending, that we're looking at roughly eight hundred million dollars in that economic impact throughout Napa County. So again, we, we, we're making that commitment because we feel that, yes, it's a risk, but we are making that investment not from a year, but we're looking at fifty, sixty years from now and how this works out. Next slide, please. Some of the project features that we're really proud about, we're committing to net-zero energy use. And that's something that I don't think you're seeing park-wide on a, on a two-and-a-half-million-square-foot park, right? We hope to achieve that all through onsite solar generation. We've also committed to not bringing natural gas to buildings at all. So these are going to be all-electric buildings with onsite generation. I think as important as anything in the current water climate that we have with the feds and state cutting allocations, water being obviously precious in all scenarios, but especially now in a drought scenario. Our water use is projected to be seventy-five percent served by recycled water from the investment that the city's making on being able to treat that and bring it back into the system. But this is, this was kind of shocking to me. We're using a hundred and thirty-three-and-a-half acre-feet less than what was already allocated for to this site in the Urban Water Management Plan. Now, if we take, you know, two households typically use an acre-foot of water a year, this is a, you know, this is a subdivision of two hundred and sixty homes, you know, did, it's kind of hard to fathom, but it, we, we feel when you look at warehouse projects, logistics centers, commerce centers, as compared to other land uses, that unequivocally this land use is the most efficient from a resource standpoint with water, energy use, sewer use compared to any other land use. We're also making the commitment to enhance EV charging. We're committing to Tier Two Cal Green charging, which I believe is up to forty percent of spaces for autos will be EV-ready. And we're also going to have a clean fleet ready for for truck fleets when that technology is readily available to market. We know that there's some prototypes out there now, but we are, we're future-proofing the park to bring the conduit necessary to serve that when it's available. And we are also making the commitment for plugins at each dock door for any refrigeration trucks, so we, we don't have emissions from idling. Next slide, please. Also of importance, when we look at our Phase One, Phase One from a land perspective is going to be sixty-five percent committed to both conservation and wetland creation. Thirty percent of the site overall will be under permanent conservation easement, forty-five-acre preservation area that we're going to offset some minor impacts to Phase One and create some wetlands within that area that is going to provide connectivity to Napa Logistics Park and their preservation area. We're also going to be extending the Napa Valley Vine Trail through our frontage on Green Island Road in Devlin, increasing public access throughout the city. Next slide, please. As Grant mentioned, we've worked with the fire district to ensure that they have the resources necessary to serve our park. We're committing to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year at build-out that ensures that the fire district is going to have the personnel and equipment necessary to serve this park at build-out. Also of importance, when we look at, at VMT, you know, typically, I think what jurisdictions are striving for is fifteen percent below a regional average, and we're doubling that, right? We're nearly thirty percent below what the Bay Area average is for auto VMT. We've also gone a step above. Truck trips and related VMT is, is not a requirement of Sequa. But we did get a comment on that, and we said, hey, let's, let's find what our truck VMT is actually going to be. So we took data that takes aggregated cellphone data, so it's actual trips. It's not projections, it's not modeling. And we looked at similar logistics facilities throughout the Bay Area, the Nine County, entire Bay Area, and compared it to both some data captured in the Central Valley, as well as data captured Napa Logistics Park, Napa Corporate Center, and others. And Ferran Peers, who probably is the most respected transportation consultant in the industry, concluded that our truck VMT is going to be nearly forty percent below the Bay Area average. And we know that trips from trucks coming out of the Napa region are, are more regional in nature. And so again, we think that we're setting the bar as far as sustainability goes for what a logistics center can be. Next, I want to pass it over to Jeff Landhart with RMW, who is the architect on the project, and he's going to walk you through a video simulation of Phase One and how this looks. And thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Before I go to the simulation, I, and it goes pretty fast, so I want to make sure I have a moment to talk about the challenge and the opportunity that Buzz Oats presented to us as architects and designers. It's not often that a developer, particularly with industrial projects, will come to us and say, we really want you to spread your wings on this project, we want to do something that exceeds what the current bar is, we want you to push that bar beyond where it currently has been. We want you to, we want to see what you can do to really push us into territory that's not been really explored yet. So that was a, both a challenge and a great opportunity and something we really appreciate. And I hope that what I'm about to show you kind of demonstrates that we've done our best to get there. We're starting with a view that looks to the west, and we see Highway twenty-nine down at the southern side of the bottom of the screen here, and in a moment, we'll see the development appear here. You can see the two buildings we're proposing. Next, we're going to move to a view from Green Island Road at the bottom of the screen. We're looking to the, to the north, and we can see the Napa development and the other context buildings and art development will appear here in a moment. Next, we're going to show you the project, you know, this kind of bird's-eye view one more time from a, a view from Devlin Road at the bottom of the screen here, looking to the east where we see Highway twenty-nine in the distance. And the development will appear here in a moment. And just briefly, we'll get a little closer to the building, so you can see some of the architectural treatments and design elements that we proposed here. And we've proposed a squarely modern and tailored design that we think does a really good job of elevating the possibilities and the potential of tilt-up concrete into something that you don't normally see where sort of dispels the, the curse that we typically see on tilt-ups well beyond the blue stripe and other tired motifs that have been tried and burned on these projects. This is something that I think everybody can support and, and appreciate as a development that really pushes the upper limits of what's possible with this type of construction. I hope you guys will agree, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have or respond to anything you've got for us. And thank you again for your time, we appreciate it greatly.
Yeah, and thanks, Jeff. And just of note, maybe you guys noticed on the, on the site plan there, but we, we tried really hard to master plan this Phase One, and we'll be master planning the entire part to, to separate auto and truck traffic, right? Where employees are going to enter in a separate driveway, separate parking field, as opposed to, you know, mixing trucks and autos. And we're just seeing that as kind of the standard now in the market, right? That this isn't everyone mixing together and hopefully everything works out. We, we are doing this on purpose to, to make this function more as a, as a typical business park, office park than you would. You know, what you think of industrial is as smokestacks and, and dirty uses, this is, this is not that, right? And so we think that we're, we're trying to take it to the next level of what these sites can be. Also, before we get into questions, we do have Bill Campden on the line, who is a representative of the, the Givinoni family, and right from the start, the the nonprofit that, that holds the land. And maybe Bill can just speak to a little bit about the history, how we got here, and any other comments he would like to share.
Thank you, Joe. Chair and commission, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and for me to have a couple of minutes. I serve as one of the three people on a foundation called Right From the Start. Right From the Start was a foundation created by Albert Givinoni. Albert was known, he grew up in Napa, a couple of brothers, Brown's Line Market, Givinoni's Market, they're pretty well-known. But Albert never married, never had any kids. And he bought this property, I bet he probably bought it sixty years ago, or maybe even seventy years ago. And in the later years of his life, Albert had a goal that he wanted to take this property and do something special with it. So two of his nephews, Michael Givinoni, Tom Givinoni, and myself, along with Albert, created a foundation called Right From the Start. And what Albert Givinoni did is upon his death, he donated all two hundred acres to the foundation with the specific goal of the foundation to fund Catholic education, get Griggs K three-twelve in the Santa Rosa Diocese, or to help Catholic education in the Santa Rosa Diocese in other ways. Albert believed in, if you want to make the world a better place, you do it through education. And so he entrusted us with this property to, to move on with it and to basically grant his wish of trying to educate and make the world a better place. We probably started fifteen years ago and kind of teeing the property up and working with American Canyon to bringing this online, and it's been a great relationship with the City of American Canyon. We got Devlin Road in, we worked on Green Island, Green Island Road together, we worked on the sewer line, the sewer pump station going through. And Jason Holly put in a lot of sweat with us, and it was a great relationship. When it came time to choose a developer for the site, Albert had a specific wish. He wanted us to do a ground lease and not sell the property outright to a developer. Albert believed that if we hold on to the land, then we'll get the property back at some point. And that way, we'll continue to always fund Catholic education for, you know, basically indefinitely. We went and talked to several developers, and, and it wasn't easy because of the ground lease situation. Most developers want to buy the land, they don't want to mess with a ground lease. Buzz Oats was a development company that we've heard about. And when we met, it was, it was a very, very good conversation. They cared about what we were doing as our mission, they were open to the idea of a ground lease. And the quality of their developments and the quality of their people were kind of the, kind of made it an easy choice for us to pick oats to work with. Through this process, which has been a long process since we just, we signed with them, they have been fantastic with us, they've helped us with things in the foundations they've had, they haven't had to help us with. And it's a, it's a organization that we're proud to be partnered with for ninety-nine years. So we hope that this project comes across well to the commission. We look forward to it because as soon as they start building that, that's, I'll just say it bluntly, that's more money that we're going to have to donate. And Michael Givinoni, Tom Givinoni, and myself, none of us get paid, that was one of Albert's wishes. We can't, we can't get paid for being on the foundation. Basically, almost a hundred percent of the ground lease money that we get from oats will go, will go to the Catholic Foundation. And so, like I said, we're excited to see the project move forward, and we're excited to start doing some pretty special things once we do get that income. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the family, the foundation, or the property itself. And I appreciate again the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, just in summary, before we give it back, this is something that we're, we're really excited about. We have the ability to be flexible on the type of users that, that landed this park, right? If you see a big building, you think, oh, it, you know, it's just going to be logistics. Well, these buildings can demise down to much smaller sizes. You know, I'll give you a story of, of Metro Air Park in Sacramento, where we had a hundred thousand square-foot shell. You know, you know, it's a concrete box, you know, what are you going to do there? And at construction, we got a call from a company out of the Bay Area called Orca Biosciences. And they do cancer research for rare cancers, and they're, they're literally, you know, have a clean room where they're doing reverse atom spinning. And you wouldn't think that typically of a warehouse building, right? But I think what you're finding now is, is more flexible uses and companies that, yes, logistics is a component. But really, it's, it's advanced manufacturing, it's biotech. It's all the things that typically would have done in a lab or an office that are now coming into what you would consider a warehouse building. And again, we look forward to attracting those high-quality tenants to the city. And with that, we open up the questions and what can we share about us and the project specifics? So thank you.
And Chairman Malarri, that concludes presentation. Ready for questions?
Any commissioner items or comments now, we can open up for a public comment. Commissioner.
If you have public comment on this item, please raise your hand now. Okay. We have Chris, we have a number of people raising their hands. I'm going to try and go in the order that people raise their hands. Chris James.
Good evening, everyone, this evening. Thanks for bringing this to the, to the Planning Commission this evening. Exciting to see such a big development happening in the city. And, you know, some of the information in the presentation. I like, wanted to pick up on the EV charging and especially around trucks and et cetera. I was at a, a recent, it was kind of a combined event with, with the city around EVs. And the MC was there, our local energy provider. And they were talking about when development's happening, I'm sure you're thinking about this or is already in the plan. It's, but it's more than just the conduit and, you know, providing, you know, that, but it's also working with PG&E anticipating down the road where these transformers down the line need to be sized accordingly. And if it's not planned out ahead, it's often awkward to, to upgrading something that I know you, you, you develop these massive projects, et cetera, but it's something to keep in mind, if it's in short order, we're going to see these things. So I'm hoping that we are working with PG&E to make sure that it's just more than, you know, availability of conduit, but it's the, the transformers and what's down the line and being pumped into close nearby that we can accommodate all those, those big trucks that are going to be coming in and being flipped over to electric hopefully in the short order, especially you talk about these projects going to be, you know, fifty to a hundred-year projects. So it's, you know, but I think in short order, we're going to see the explosion of EV trucks. And it's exciting to see that you're willing to support that. Okay, good luck with the project, thanks.
Okay, next we have Frances Tenny.
Good evening, thanks so much for the opportunity to make comments tonight, and thank you to Mr. Cooper, who talked to me about, about this meeting earlier today. So my name is Frances Tenny, and I'm a legal fellow with the Center for Biological Diversity. And the center is a nonprofit, public interest, environmental organization that's dedicated to protecting native species and their habitats through science, policy, and environmental law. And we have over ninety-eight thousand members throughout California and the United States. And the center's worked for many years to protect the environment and quality of life for people. And the center has worked for many years to protect the environment and quality of life for people in Napa County. And we've been following this project in particular since February ninth, twenty twenty one, when we submitted comments on the notice of preparation. And so we now reviewed the final environmental impact report for the project. And we intend to submit written comments on it. And we're concerned about some of the environmental problems that we've seen with this project and and some problems we've seen with the environmental review process. So first, the EIR understates and doesn't properly mitigate the project's impacts to sensitive species, such as the Swanson Hawk and Golden Eagle, or its impacts to significant wetlands. Second, the project's greenhouse gas emissions aren't properly analyzed. Because, among other things, the EIR uses an inappropriate threshold of significance. Third, the project doesn't adopt all feasible mitigation measures for impacts to air quality or greenhouse gas emissions, including measures that are recommended by the California Attorney General and that are standard for other warehouse projects, like requiring rooftop solar and the use of all electric equipment on site. For the these reasons and others, we're concerned about the lasting environmental consequences of this project for the people, species, and ecosystems of American Canyon. We urge the planning commission to recommend not approving this project unless and until these deficiencies are remedied. Thanks so much.
Okay, next we have Richard Franco.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to present to this evening. My name is Richard Franco. I'm speaking on behalf of Napa Solano residents for responsible development. We submitted some preliminary written comments earlier today addressing the city's continued failure to adequately analyze and mitigate the project's significant environmental impacts. And I just want to summarize a few key issues here. First, I wanted to address an issue involving significant new information that requires that the EIR be revised and recirculated for further public review. We have a wildlife biologist consultant who made a site visit last week and observed a new gravel road cutting across the western portion of the property from north to south and cutting directly across the proposed wetlands mitigation area and very close to No Name Creek in the northwest corner of the property. This road is not disclosed in the in the DEIR or the final EIR, does not appear on any of the site maps, drawings, or diagrams. And the EIR must be revised to disclose and explain what this is, what it's been used for, as well as the environmental impacts associated with its construction and use, and whether it will impact the ability of the site to preserve or to mitigate the wetlands impacts on that northern portion of the site. With respect to vehicle miles traveled, the VMT analysis in the EIR is deficient. The estimated VMT for the for the project of sixteen point two four miles was purportedly generated using the California statewide travel demand model. But none of the calculations or the inputs, any of the information going into that model to derive that number was provided in the DEIR or the FEIR. It's essentially a black box. There's no analysis made available to the public so that that number can be evaluated. The hiding this analysis from the public is a violation of SEQA. Finally, I wanted to touch on the the wetlands issues we've commented both in the on the DEIR as well as in our preliminary FEIR comments about the complete lack of a functional wetlands analysis, which is necessary, critical, and indispensable in order
Mr. Franco, you have thirty seconds.
Thank you. It's indispensable to be able to actually assess what the impacts of the project on the existing wetlands will be and whether the project will be able to adequately mitigate those impacts. Thank you very much. We urge the planning commission to not send this to the city council until a revised and recirculated EIR is done. Thank you.
Does anybody else have comments? Please raise your hand at this time. Going once. We do still have several people in attendance. If you would like to make comment, please raise your hand. Nobody is raising their hand. Where are we getting? I'm not sure where we're getting feedback. Chair Malari, could you please unmute yourself, I think? Yeah, we're getting feedback from your end somehow. It's better. There's still a little bit, but it's better.
All right, so we closed public comment. Move on to the presenters potentially to comment on any of the comments that were presented to us.
I'm sorry. I was getting feedback. I didn't hear what you said.
I gave the opportunity for the presenters to first read any of the comments that were presented in the public comment section.
I'd be happy to.
So I I want to make available Jim Moose, who is our SEQA counsel, is on the line, as well as Robert Ferreira, our biologist. I mean, should the questions come from planning commissioners? Or is it the desire of the planning commission for us to respond directly to public comment?
I think it would be in the best interest of you or to respond to the the public comments currently.
I will I will defer to our counsel on this issue. I know that there was a letter that came in at like five fifteen that was about a hundred pages. But I'll I'll defer to to Jim Moose.
Good evening, commissioners. I did get a chance to read the letter from Mr. Franco, which came in late this afternoon. It looked to me to be reminiscent of many of the points that he and his consultants had made on the draft EIR, to which there were very thorough responses in the final EIR. It sounds like there may be another letter coming from the Center for Biological Diversity. I haven't seen that. But I am familiar with the comments they filed on the draft EIR. So I can't assess the the merits of any additional comments. But my my general thought is that there is time between this meeting and the city council meeting for First Carbon and biologists who are working on the project to sort through all the the new commentary and to be able to advise the city council as to whether there may be some potential merit to any of it. I wouldn't expect, frankly, any true legal deficiencies to be identified. But I didn't see anything in the Adams-Broadwell letter that suggested that the commission ought not to proceed tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Malari. I would like to follow up on one of the public comments. Mr. Franco, in his written public comment, and I'm glad that he did join us today to repeat his public comment because I didn't get a chance to really do more than scan his his letter. But I was interested in one point he made about a new gravel road that's across the wetlands mitigation area. I'm curious if this is a new development or if this was something that he had previously asked about in an earlier public comment. Because the response seemed to indicate that much of what he said was was already addressed. So I want to know if this is a new issue or a similar issue that was already raised earlier.
A fair point. That one is a new issue. I'm not personally familiar with what he's referring to. So maybe someone else who's more familiar with what's happening on the site right now could explain.
I can speak to that. So the letter addresses some comments made by Scott Cashin, who is a biologist that is working for Mr. Franco. And he says, on on November ninth, twenty twenty two, wildlife biologist performed a site visit to the project site. During this visit, he observed and documented a new road and dirt burned that installed in the western portion of the site. What he's referring to is the Devlin Road Extension, which opened earlier this year. And they say that this was not disclosed in the draft EIR. This is a new comment, by the way, not previously raised. I'd just like to note for the record, the draft EIR disclosed the Devlin Road Extension in three different places in the project description, beginning on page two dash one of the project description, where we say, "The City of American Canyon owns an approximately eight acre strip of land that bisects the site north to south. The strip of land would support the planned extension of Devlin Road from Middleton Way to Green Island Road, which was under construction as of summer of twenty twenty one." So it disclosed there. On page two dash three of this project description, we have a heading called "Devlin Road, the Napa Valley Wine Trail Extension Project." And if you'll bear with me, I'll just read briefly. "The City of American Canyon adopted a mitigated negative declaration for the Devlin Road and Napa Valley Wine Trail Extension on October one, twenty nineteen. The project consisted of the extension of Devlin Road from Green Island Road to Middleton Way. The extended roadway would have one fourteen foot travel lane in each direction and a twelve foot two-way left turn lane. The majority of the three thousand eighty-four foot segment would be located within the Givernoni property." On page two dash five, under the heading "Devlin Road Extension", as previously discussed, the City of American Canyon is extending Devlin Road approximately three thousand eight hundred three thousand eighty-four feet, linear feet, from Green Island Road to Middleton Way. Devlin Road Extension is fully funded. The environmental review process was completed in twenty nineteen and the construction began in twenty twenty one. As such, the Devlin Road Extension would be completed prior to phase one of the proposed Givernoni Logistics Center project. And finally, in exhibit two dash three, site photographs, there is a photograph of the under-construction Devlin Road project. The draft EIR clearly disclosed the fact that Devlin Road was going to be extended through the site regardless what happens to this project. And with that, I'll return it back to the chair.
Thank you for that clarification. I we're all aware of Devlin Road for those of us who live here in the city. I did not match that Devlin Road was the road that was being referred to as the New Gravel Road in the public comments. So thank you for that clarification.
Vice Chair Wong, any other?
Um, yes, I mean, just to follow up to the comments from the Center for Biological Diversity. They spoke about the impact of sensitive species and wetlands, the greenhouse gas emissions. So I guess my concern is, is, you know, as a commissioner and as residents, you know, we are concerned about the environmental impact of all of our our projects. And I understand this process tonight is is a little different. We're not approving it, we're just providing our recommendation to council. So I I'm a little, some of these ongoing environmental concerns, how do we? How do we address them? How do they get resolved?
This is the city attorney. Can I comment?
Yes, please.
All right. I think as Mr. Gruber indicated, you know, there have been several previous final SEQA analysis of this area. And I will characterize the comments, Ms. Tenny, as general. They're certainly referenced to specific areas of environmental analysis in the existing document with the indication that there will be further clarification in a written written statement to follow, with no indication of when it's going to be provided. I think what, you know, Mr. Moose has said is relevant. But I'd also, you know, like Mr. Gruber and the applicants to comment if they feel that any additional time is needed to address issues in the four areas that Ms. Tenny was that referred to. You know, again, there's, you know, a process in SEQA where we're not supposed to guess about outcomes. We're supposed to base recommendations on substantial evidence, which is what the commission's doing. But, you know, on the one hand, there, you know, we don't know about what Ms. Tenny is going to say in writing. On the on the other hand, there has, you know, I think it's, you know, very fair to say that the record shows that there's been significant, repetitive, substantial environmental reviews under SEQA that are final, not subject to judicial review, that have focused on this property. So I think, you know, a further statement from Mr. Gruber and the applicants would be appropriate as to the record about whether they feel they're they would be prejudiced by having the the planning commission go forward on the evidence that's presented and go to the council, understanding that it is possible that significant new, excuse me, that it is possible that there are issues that could be raised by Ms. Tenny or others before the planning commission, or excuse me, before the city council that wouldn't have been heard by the planning commission in making their recommendation today on. I I think it's fair to say the record before the commission's extensive. So, you know, one, you know, that's a question to the applicant's representatives. And two, I guess it would be to Ms. Tenny about, do you have any timeframe as to when you think your written comments that could supplement the general comments that you've made would be made available? So I have two questions, as I've just phrased, so.
I I can take the first part. We feel strongly about our document and the significant analysis that has gone into it. You know, to to hold off because of someone, frankly, is threatening to share more information. We feel that we've done more than an adequate job of analyzing the environmental impacts and providing corresponding mitigation. So we do stand by the document that the city has created. And I also defer to our counsel, but just from the plain view, we have done significant analysis based on, like Mr. Ross has said, years and years of analysis in this area that frankly granted his company has been at the forefront of. By the way, I'm happy to address any of these comments. With regards to Ms. Tenny and the Center for Biological Diversity, from what I understood, sensitive species she referenced were the Swanson Hawk. I mentioned that in my presentation, the Golden Eagle. Again, that's a very similar species to the Swanson Hawk in terms of nests and trees. There are no trees on this site. So basically, the only potential is your foraging habitat on the site. I would note that Robert Ferreira from Huffman Broadway is a biologist who has studied the site. He is available. Should you have any additional comments about or questions about those two species? And also about her comments about wetlands, greenhouse gas emissions? We used the adopted guidance given by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And we found that we could mitigate greenhouse gas emissions to a level of less than significant. As Mr. Leviach in his presentation noted, this project will not have natural gas. This project will be using renewable electricity. This project incorporates many of the features that were recommended by the California Air Resource Board in this letter. Finally, air quality impacts mitigation. We have not one but two tables in the draft and the final EIR where we went through the laundry list of mitigation measures submitted by Mr. Franco and another organization, the Bullen State Environmental Justice Alliance, saying that we need to consider whether or not these are applicable. We did that exercise. It's available, you can read it. And again, we argue it's a good faith analysis because we did adopt And again, we argue it's a good faith analysis because we did adopt three of those mitigation measures and include them in the final E I R.
Uh, speaking as the city attorney, I, I think one area that I think is worth pointing out to the commission is Mr. Gruber represented or commented upon the V M T analysis. And, um, I think it's important to note that prior to doing that, uh, in the document, I believe it begins at page five eighty-three as it appears in the record before the commission that this, the uncertainty about how to apply that analysis, but there are various sources to perform that so that the full information is for the commission, including a modified level of service analysis, which was the previous method employed to assess traffic impacts, which was accomplished in all the prior environmental documents referenced that cover this site. So I think that's significant. So I think basically it's down to members of the commission if there are questions where you think additional information might be helpful. Uh, if you could phrase those, I think that would be beneficial to both the applicant and staff. Our review would indicate that unless there's more specificity advanced at this time, that both because of the procedure and timing of the environmental review, more, more than adequate time has been allotted for public comment both at the N O P stage and at the draft stage than normally is the case, right? And, but, you know, this is the time. So if you feel, you know, before making a recommendation of the council that you have questions about what's been presented, um, I think that now's the time to advance them and, you know, get a response from staff and or the applicant. Thanks.
I wonder if I could just jump in, uh, one more time on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I feel underdressed. I didn't know everyone's going to be wearing a tie. I, I am an attorney that may not look like it. Now, doing Sequo and sequel litigation for thirty-seven years and likely if this one would go to court would be in charge of defending the C I R. I'm very familiar with Mr. Franco's firm and also the Center for Biological Diversity. It's very common on, on literally the, the day of a planning commission hearing or even after a planning commission hearing prior to a city, uh, council hearing or a board of supervisors hearing for voluminous comments of this, uh, nature to be, uh, provided to the, uh, sequel lead agency. It's kind of a, a common tactic to try to delay, uh, the project. Uh, part of my job is going to be to, to very carefully review anything that comes in. And if my honest assessment is that there's a legal vulnerability uh, that's identified by, uh, one of these parties, uh, I would bring that to the attention of the city and, uh, would advocate that any problem be addressed. Because I wouldn't be doing Mr. Leviach any, any favors recommending going forward with any I R that could be successfully challenged in court. But to see this sort of avalanche of new, new comments at, at the last minute is, you know, for good or ill, something that happens almost every day of the week, it seems like somewhere around California, logistics projects are kind of the flavor of the month for opposition from some of the environmental groups and labor unions these days, so. We would intend to study this very carefully, but there is time between now and the city council meeting, and if, if there are points that truly have merit, I would, you know, tell Mr. Ross, I thought that was the case. And if we had to, you know, do more work, then I would suggest we should do more work. But right now, I don't, I don't honestly think that, uh, they've raised any fatal flaws based on what I've seen from this letter uh, that we do have this evening.
Thank you for that, Mr. Bean. Uh, Vice Chair Wong.
And, and I, I do appreciate all of the comments and, and the responses we have, we have been getting. Um, and and I think it's just, this is a public hearing and we want to make sure that we give everyone who's, you know, attended a chance to make sure that their comments were heard and responded to. Um, I did have a question of my own. I know it's been mentioned that there's going to be a forty-five acre preservation area. And then I think it was in one of the slide decks, it talked about in phase one, sixty-five percent would go to conservation, and I think it was stated thirty percent overall. How does that, that must of course be in addition to the forty-five acres? Cause that seems like a rela- relatively small number.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Is that the same number?
It may have been confusing. Uh, so the phase one project specific uh, site plan that you have in front of you tonight, uh, I believe is about seventy acres. And what we, what we intend to do is to establish the wetland preserve with phase one, uh, mitigate for phase one impacts by creating wetlands within that forty-five acre preserve. We would also overbuild wetlands for potential additional impacts in phase two. So that forty-five acres, uh, would not change. It's still thirty percent of the hundred and fifty-six of what we deem is, is developable. Uh, it's just a reference to of what we are improving with phase one. Uh, nearly sixty-five percent of the land cover is dedicated to conservation. Knowing that, uh, that number of forty-five acre wetland preserve, that'll, that'll stick, right? We're, we're not, uh, we're not doing more than that. It was just to highlight uh, much of phase one is going to, uh, preservation as well as, uh, creation within that, that overall forty-five acre area that will uh, be protected in, in perpetuity through a conservation agent.
And so, and that is part of your agreement with the owners of the property because I understand you have a hundred-year land lease, so they will honor that beyond the land lease, or does that only last during the land lease?
No, that, that conservation area will, will remain open space in, in perpetuity. That, that is what we, uh, deem is, is not developable land. And so, uh, our structure is, is based on, uh, the developable land within, uh, the overall two hundred and eight acre site.
Okay, so that will, so that will always be open space and perpetuity.
Correct.
Okay, I was curious, can you show us? I know you had diagrams up and you outlined, um, the different roads and everything, but I, I miss seeing where on the property the forty-five acre, um, open space would be.
Yeah, maybe we can go to this, just the site plan from, one moment.
And would it be possible as well to get Mr., I don't know if this is possible, but I just want to make sure Mr. Franco is aware that the road he's talking about is Devlin Road as well to close that as a, cause that's a pretty significant. Devlin Road is like a main road, not an unnamed gravel road. I don't know if we can do that during, as part of the public hearing or not, Chairman Lari.
Oh, we would have to open up the comment again. Um, but since the map is up, we can just point it out. That's me, but I don't believe that.
Uh, can, um, Mr. Wong, can you see my, my mouse here? And I'm sorry, we don't have a graphic. It's in our, our lot line adjustment in our tentative map, but uh, basically our forty-five acres will follow this dotted line here. Phase one, come across Devlin, jot up a little bit, come down this protected area. Basically everything here. So this is your, your forty-five acre wetland preserve. Uh, basically most of the northern section of, of the site.
I'm very excited to see such a large corridor being protected. Um, I have a question, and this isn't my area of expertise, but is it possible to have a corridor crossing for the wildlife across, for them to cross safely? Cause that's going to be a busy road for them to cross. It's great, it's there, but how do they navigate it?
There are culverts under Devlin for drainage, but, um, I do have Robert Pereira, our biologist, who I think could speak to that. Uh, probably more eloquently than I can.
Sure. Sure, there is technically a corridor for smaller terrestrial animals. There's a fairly large culvert that goes under um, this extension. It's right, right about where your cursor is, Joe. A little bit. Right, so I think it's right out there. So, uh, water, animals will be able to move back and forth. Obviously, deer won't be able to. You know, foxes will be able to go under there, coyotes will be able to go under there, deer might have to go over the road. But in general, wildlife will be able to go from one end to the other. And then when you get to the far um, northwest corner, it's kind of the same situation. There's a fairly large culvert that goes under that road that eventually goes to um, the Napa Logistics Wetland Preserve. And so there's the hydrologic connection, uh, between the two sites. And wildlife can go back and forth uh, through the culvert. Again, maybe deer might have to go over the road, you know, but, uh, smaller, average-sized terrestrial animal should be able to move back and forth uh, between the areas.
Is, is there any possibility of putting an underground corridor for the deer?
Uh, that would have to be a pretty big, well, the Devlin Road Extension is already in, so you couldn't do something like that. And then the culvert at the end is already in also. It would have to be a pretty big opening. Um, I know they do corridors for, like that for, uh, for cattle. Uh, but they're pretty large, so you, I, I don't think you can do something like that. So, you know, things like deer will have to uh, move across the road, which, um, you know, to get back and forth.
Okay. Well, thank you, um, for showing me the planned area on the, um, on the map. That will be a, a nice, a nice feature to have. I was also excited to see her documentation that the buildings will be dual-plumbed for recycled water as well, which is something I'd love to see more of our new residential development have, but I understand it's, it's not allowed yet. So that was great to see as well. Um, well, I've asked a bunch of questions, so maybe I'll give my other fellow commissioners a chance and, and maybe, um, there might be a possibility we could go back to, um, seeing if there's more public comment as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wong. Commissioner Ngok.
You, Chair. Uh, my question really has to do with wetlands as, as well. The image that was just shown in the southwestern portion of what would be phase two of this project, there's a significant area of wetlands there. Yet that's not included in the forty-five acres. Is there a plan on either saving that portion of wetlands, or is that being mitigated by the forty-five acres that are being established on the northern part of property?
If that wetland is impacted right now with, uh, in the E I R, we have that large wetland impacted, the whole site's built out. So if it does get impacted, we will, uh, mitigate for that within the forty-five acre site. And so we're anticipating that that wetland, that large wetland will be impacted, so we're actually overbuilding. The plan is to overbuild our wetland establishment in that forty-five acre area to create the wetlands now in anticipation of them being impacted. It may or may not get impacted once the final project is built, but we're anticipating that it will. And so we're going to create the wetlands, we're going to preserve the forty-five acres. If that project never gets built or it's built differently and you don't impact that area, the wetlands will still be preserved, the wetlands will still be built, the forty-five acre well and preserve will still be a preserve. So it's, it's a risk that Buzzots is taking by spending the money and overbuilding these wetlands, which will create great habitat. So it, they will be mitigated on that forty-five acre site. Everything will tie in nicely to the existing Napa Logistics Wetland Preserve.
My other question, I only have one other question. It really goes back to vehicle miles, miles traveled. Um, there was a comment about truck vehicle miles traveled. Um, and I'm uncertain if that is based on perspective or possible tenants to the buildings and the matter of truck traffic they will bring in and out, or is that truck traffic based on just the building of and the development of the site?
Well, obviously it's going to be user-driven, but you can, you can extrapolate trends, right, on, on logistics facilities overall. And when you look at, you know, the Napa region, American Canyon, uh, that those, those truck trips aren't the same length that you would see in the Central Valley, in Sacramento. Uh, and so looking at the entire Bay Area, where we actually took the raw data, th- these aren't projections, right? These are, these are facilities, uh, throughout the Bay Area that we looked at and, uh, what we're showing of actual trips within American Canyon as compared to the rest of the Bay Area that those, those trips are nearly, I think it was thirty-nine percent, nearly forty percent lower than the Bay Area average.
Yeah, and again, my question really goes to that, if you look at Napa County truck vehicle miles traveled, especially in American Canyon, um, those numbers aren't really indicative of a lot of other industries because it's all wine storage. And wine storage, you come in, you store, and then at some point in time it's going out. Um, so depending on the tenants, that number may not be very accurate. That's kind of my question there.
Yeah, you know, the, the other thing with that, um, that I don't think was highlighted probably to the extent, uh, we do have rail access to this site as well. And so we have had interest from tenants already. Uh, again, we obviously can't, uh, get site tenants here yet, but they have inquired about, uh, the accessibility to rail and having that as, uh, really a, a locational feature that you can't really find, generally speaking, throughout the Bay Area near these type of corridors. So you're right that it, it, uh, it is always user-driven, right? But what we found in the aggregate, um, that these trips are lower, and we also have the ability with access to rail that some of those trips can, could be offset by uh, the utilization of rail.
I guess, um, one more question. Um, and it really has to do with the environmental attributes you talked about in the project, which overall were outstanding. I noticed that you're building the structure with, um, the ability to add solar under the roof, but there's no intention at this point in time to put solar up there.
Uh, that is a, that is a condition of approval uh, that the buildings shall be served with solar energy on site.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chair Malari. I wanted to, uh, just point out that, um, there is a condition of approval with respect to overall trips. Um, a trip monitoring program that's modeled off after, on the Napa Logistics Park. So, um, you know, there's assumptions that are made in the environment impact report and the environmental impacts are, come from that, but there's a recognition that the site could evolve over time and, and so, um, there's a trip monitoring program that monitors trips on the site based upon what the E I R assumed. And there's different programs and things to help reduce trips. Um, and then a fail-safe, um, program in the event that they aren't successful. So that's worked very well for the Napa Logistics Park. Um, and, and we assume the same would occur here.
All right, um, if I may, uh, I've just, um, thank you for the presentation and, um, and all the work that's gone on behind this. Um, it's, it's been a long time coming, I know, and, uh, you know, I, I think this is, um, going to be a great benefit. I really like the concept of the vehicle traffic being separated between the trucks and, and the vehicle of the workers there. And the potential of, of, uh, you know, what could all go on there, and I think it will be a, a big enhancement to the city overall. Um, I, I don't have to, any real deep cre- questions except, um, except to the LEED status of the building. I mean, it seems very sustainable. You've got all of that, but it's, it, I don't recall any, seeing anything about, uh, LEED standard. Is, is that in the works or did I miss that?
Uh, we are be, building to LEED standards, and I, I think our architect's probably better. First in this, and me, even though I did write- Person this and me, even though I did write my grad school thesis on LEED certification and uh, cost benefit analysis. Cal Green is, is basically turning into what, what LEED was, right, so these are things that uh, we are doing. Tier two EV charging, you know, the, the no VOC coatings, uh bicycle racks, showers, I, I know it's a checklist. Uh, but we, we are building to these standards, whether we will pursue certification, I believe, is, is something that's to be determined, but uh, maybe Jeff Lenar can speak to some of the kind of attributes as to what, what goes into that there.
Yeah, I, I really see Cal Green, as Joe said, as a, as really the premier uh standard for sustainability moving into the future because it's mandatory and it affects all projects. Certainly all commercial projects and, and tier one, Cal Green uh, measures up to LEED certification almost as an equivalent, there, there's a few things in Cal Green that aren't in LEED and there's a few things in LEED that aren't in Cal Green because they're not exactly the same system, but essentially once you've reached your compliance with tier one Cal Green. You've reached a level of sustainability that would qualify you almost without exception to attain LEED certification. Tier two Cal Green, which is usually not uh pursued um, and, and certainly not for type of projects of this type, um, goes beyond that and certainly in the realm of the logical vehicle charging stations being installed and not just EV ready is a, is a pretty high threshold for an industrial project, a logistics project such as this, advanced manufacturing. Um, I think there's a, you know, in spite of there not being a, a concrete commitment to LEED certification on this project, I think there's still a very strong sustainability story to be made.
Yeah, I would think with what we're uh committing to, you know, LEED certification or not, I, I would be hard pressed to find anyone else that's going to be doing what we're doing, I mean, really, from, you know, the charging, no natural gas, onsite, solar. You know, like you mentioned, the design features of, I know it's a site issue of, of separating truck and, and auto traffic, but uh, we really think that we are going above and beyond here.
Okay, and um, and when we uh get to public comment, uh, just to note to the public, there, there was a, a document sent today um, by, I see uh, one of the attendees, so it'd be good to hear from that attendee um, when we go to public comment. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Navarro, um, we just had two questions, and this is more into, I think I might answer the first question, but you mentioned the high quality tenants, um, you build it, they will come. You know, but how do you um, how do you seek those high quality tenants? Um, and then also in regards to the longevity of having a business here in American Canyon. Uh, when signing the lease and sending that over, is there a certain minimum of uh, years that you are looking to have? A, that the tenant there, or is there a minimum or some type of requirements that um, Buzzots or anything that has been instilled with, you know, the many years of services that you guys have done?
Yeah, it's, it's multifaceted, as far as how we, how we find our tenants. Um, we have over two hundred existing tenants, right, and so a lot of that is, you know, I mentioned regional consolidation of, you'll have a company with a building in Vacaville, a building in Napa, you know, maybe Fairfield, and they want to, they want to consolidate all of those disparate operations into one larger building, right, that's, that's one thing that we've been seeing. Uh, we, we certainly work with the brokerage community on locating those tenants, we work with economic development departments locally, we work with the state economic development group. Uh, so there's a whole host of ways how we, how we find tenants and many times, uh, you know, site selectors. They will say, we want to be here for this reason, right, a lot of times, okay, we want to attract these type of industries. Uh, but the, the, the data analytics that goes into where a company should be. Ultimately, you know, sometimes they come to us, right, and so there's not, there's not a one size fits all there, but I think um, with the high quality buildings that, that we do build, uh, we do attract high quality tenants, I mean, I mentioned two thirds are national tenants and a, the third mix of regional and local. Uh, but we don't, we don't sign leases with everyone that knocks on our door, you know, we have um, investment committee that approves these things, we have a pretty strict underwriting, right, on, on how uh, we analyze credit, and so uh, we are selective in that and we are, we are fortunate to be in a position to uh, sometimes pass on tenants that we don't feel are the best fit for the building or community, so uh, again, I'm sorry, there's not a, a one size fits all answer there, but it's, you know, it's existing relationships. Um, it's leveraging, you know, workforce within a community and ultimately, we feel that we have a, a strong tenant mix now, what, uh, what other part of the question did I miss, I'm sorry?
I think you, you, you covered it, it's how, how we find a high quality tenant and then if there's a, a minimum of years.
Lease, you know, typically a, a, just a standard lease is, you know, three to five years, seven years, sometimes you get a ten year lease depending on that, but uh, yeah, we, we like longer leases, right, it, it's less turnover in buildings. And um, you know, if we could, if we could get a ten year lease out of clients or even longer, fifteen, twenty. Certainly, we like that, it's, I think sometimes the users want to have that flexibility of, as, as they expand. Uh, that they have the ability to either consolidate like within the park. Uh, you know, that they could further expand there. Or uh, they just have that flexibility to remain nimble, so, yeah, an average seven year lease, say. Uh, we like, we like longer leases, but um, it is always user driven and site specific.
Great, thank you. That's all the comments that I had, I want to thank you for the presentation, I guess, very well put, but very well presented, um, and appreciate the time that you guys put into
Thank you.
There was a recommendation to open up public comments, uh, again, and I will go forth and open up a public comment, Nicole, can you take a look and see if we have any?
Yes, so this is the second call for public comment on this item. Okay, I have Richard Franco. Um, I will ask him to unmute, Mr. Franco, you have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify my prior comments, I'm well aware of the Dublin Road Extension. The new road I was referring to is not the Dublin Road Extension. It is in the, it starts in the northwest corner of the site near where No Name Creek leaves the site. And it goes a, all the way across from north to south and it ends near the southern boundary of the site at the railroads, railroad tracks. So, uh, there's uh, images that we've provided in the comments we, we've provided today. Um, both of my consultants have provided images, if you look at my the, 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 the comments that were provided today, um, on page thirty-seven of the PDF, uh, overlays the new uh, images of the satellite images of the new road over the uh, some of the, the wetlands site plan. And Mr. Cashin, you know, the, the wildlife biologist also provided a uh, Google satellite image at page sixty-one on the PDF. It's clearly not Dublin Road, I know what Dublin Road is, and this is something new, I, I, I don't know what it is, and I was hoping to get an explanation from, um, from folks tonight, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, maybe uh, Grant can speak to the uh new sewer alignment that was part of Napa Logistics and their certified EIR. Uh, that has a, an easement to it, uh, that was already part of a, a further project that is not relevant to, to this one here.
Just for a point of clarification.
I mean, the in, image from the Napa Logistics EIR, not sure how clearly it's going to, okay. I won't try to do it, but this is the sewer alignment and uh, recycled water alignment that was installed throughout the western portion that was contemplated by the Napa Logistics Project. And this is a certified EIR, it was issued in twenty fifteen, certified in twenty fifteen. So, this is not a secret, it's been on the books for a while, and apparently it's, was it's been constructed recently or within the past year or so. So, if you want to reference, it's exhibit two dash nine dash A of the Napa Logistics Park Phase Two Project Environmental Impact Report. But yes, this has been previously evaluated by the city, in fact, we had a number of mitigation measures that were specifically for the uh, utility alignment.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Erica, wait, do you have your?
Were they referring to the sewer main on the phase two portion of the property, which is the far west, on the west side of Dublin Road that's now built? Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I'm referring to that.
No, the, the person making the comment, Mr. Franco.
Maybe he's not familiar with it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, I don't know what it is, that's why I brought it to the attention of, of the commission tonight, it, it, my consultant went out and saw what clearly appeared to be a gla- a gravel road with associated earth disturbance on either side of it that runs through the proposed wetlands mitigation area that clearly appears to impact areas that are slated for wetland mitigation, like they're going to create wetlands mitigation on area that's already been compacted and disturbed, so I, i- if it's a sewer line, I'm not sure why there's a road built on top of the gravel road, but it, it's, um, that, we're, we're raising it because it appears to be a new development that needs to be evaluated and it clearly would affect the ability uh, to create uh, wetlands mitigation in this area. We do know that all wetlands have been staked and there haven't been any impact to any existing wetlands. And that improvement was part of another project's certified EIR, so uh, again, I think last minute, this has been a project that was approved uh, years ago, and now those improvements have been made. We do know that our biologists, both Napa Logistics Biologists and our biologists coordinated uh, the staking of any wetlands and no existing wetlands have been impacted, so if there were temporary uh, roads on upland areas, uh, I can't speak to what Mr. Franco is saying, but again, those improvements were already contemplated a long time ago.
Thank you for the responsibility, uh, ensure that we have a public comment that we can respond to.
Um, okay, so if anybody else has public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Nobody is raising their hand, Chair Malari.
Perfect, thank you, I have a lot of any close public comment, um, Erica, did you have one?
I just wanted to clarify for Planning Commission, Erica Smithy, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Um, if, if the gravel road they're referring to is the new force main that was part of the Napa Logistics Park Project. Um, that has been completed, it was accepted by council earlier this year, approximately a month ago now. Um, you have to have a maintenance road as part of that easement to maintain our sewer main. So, um, as has been already conveyed before by the developer, this is all permitted work that's been approved and uh, would not have taken place without the appropriate regulatory properties and the uh, environmental approvals, so thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Looking for any recommendations on the re-resolutions that we have ahead of us today?
I, I will move to, um, to approve the, um, to approve this project, I know we don't have a resolution to read off of.
I think Director Cooper emailed us something.
Yes, there is, I sent an email with the re- the first resolution to recommend uh, the City Council certify the environment impact report um, later this afternoon. Um, the resolution title is um, included in the staff report recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. Navarro, I have it open if you'd like me to do it.
Okay, go ahead, you can make it.
So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of American Canyon, California, recommending the City Council, one, certify the final re- environmental impact report. Um, S C H two zero two one zero one zero one oh four. Item two, adopt sequel findings for a fact. Item three, adopt a statement of overriding considerations, and item four, adopt a mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the Geo Givernini Logistics Center project located north of Green Island Road and bisected by the Devlin Road, that is A P N zero five seven dash zero nine zero dash zero zero eight and zero five seven dash one three zero zero three four and zero five seven dash one three zero dash zero three six. That is file number P L two zero dash zero zero four two, how did you?
I second.
Both call.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Goff.
Hi.
Commissioner Navarro.
Hi.
Commissioner, or excuse me, Vice Chair Wong.
I.
And Chairman uh, Malari.
Hi. Thank you, moving on to finding a recommendation um, for resolution of the second bullet item for the City Council to approve the G V, Geo Vanini Logistics Center Phase One. Design permit. Do that, I'll make the motion to um, find the resolution, uh, resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of American Canyon, California, recommending the City Council of the City of American Canyon approve the Geo Vanini Logistics Center Phase One Design Permit to allow up to uh, one zero six nine nine oh four square foot uh, beach of high cube warehouse uses on seventy point two acres located north of Green Island Road and east of Devlin Road, A P N zero five seven zero nine zero 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 eight, zero five seven, one three zero, zero three four, and zero five seven, one three zero, zero three six. File number P L two zero dash zero zero four two.
I will second.
Commissioner Goff, both call.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Goff.
Hi.
Commissioner Navarro.
Hi.
Commissioner Altman is absent, Vice Chair Wong.
I.
Chair Malari.
I. Moving along, looking for a recommendation for bullet three.
I uh, I will uh, recommend uh, to move forward with the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of American Canyon, California. The uh, City Council of American Canyon approved the Geo Vanini Logistics Center tentative partial map to create a two lot subdivision for up to one million uh, sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and four square feet of high cube warehouse uses on seven point two acres located north of Green Island Road and east of Devlin Road, A P N zero four seven dash zero nine zero dash zero zero eight and zero five seven dash one three zero dash zero three four and zero five seven dash one three zero dash zero three six, file number P L twenty dash zero zero four three.
I will also second.
Yes, Commissioner Goff.
Hi.
Commissioner Navarro.
Hi.
Commissioner Altman is absent, Vice Chair Wong.
I.
And Chair Malari.
I. Thank you. And congratulations. Moving on to the next round.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to active planning projects, uh, feel free to stay on or by omeet. View it on the next round.
We will see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Director Cooper, the floor is all yours.
Great. Where'd everybody go? This is the fun part.
Yeah, I am.
So it just highlights, uh, of activities in the community development department. Um, and, um, kind of on our list here, um, the Hampton Inn Hotel, which was approved by the planning commission and city council a little more than a year ago, um, they applied for an extension of their entitlement, um, which staff has approved. And, uh, they intend to submit their building permit, um, possibly before the end of the calendar year. So I know that was, um, a project over there, uh, just south of, um, uh, Donaldson Way, Highway twenty nine. Had a lot of design considerations, um, a lot of features, I think, that we're all very proud of. It's nice to see, um, that one, uh, moving forward to construction. So, um, that's, uh, coming up soon, um, for all of us. Um, the Watson Ranch specific plan amendment, um, had a meeting today with the applicant and staff um, and a council appointed subcommittee, uh, and the city attorney. Um, the application is still evolving a little bit. Um, had some good, um, discussion. Uh, we expect to get a little modified, um, uh, to the plan proposal. And then, um, we'll be, um, doing our, doing some outreach on that. And ultimately, it'll be going to all the commissions and the planning committee, uh, as a recommendation to the city council. A specific plan is adopted by ordinance. So that's, um, something that is approved by the city council. But there is no change to the overall number of dwelling units. There's kind of some reconfiguration, um, taking a look at the specific plan, kind of streamlining it a bit. Um, and now that it's up and running, um, so we're kind of looking forward to, uh, bringing that to you, um, in the new year. Um, see, the Chicken Guy Restaurant staff has, um, had one review, um, that was sent into the applicant. Um, we've had some, uh, a meeting with, uh, the applicant and expect we'll be, um, uh, getting a resubmit for that fairly soon. Um, let's see, the residences at Napa Junction, this is in a, a proposed apartment project of four hundred and fifty-three units. It's, uh, north of Tractor Supply and the Canyon Ridge Apartments. They're, um, what we call the balloon property, um, of the railroad lines that are there today, and there are some that were once there. Um, we have, um, a cultural resource, um, review of the, um, historical railroad firms that are there and having a peer review. We expect to get that peer review report fairly soon. Um, and, uh, we've had two staff reviews, um, of the project and are awaiting the applicant to resubmit. So, um, lots kind of cooking, um, on that one for sure. Um, we have an application called Sun Square Mixed Use Project. This is a, um, a fairly small project of about half an acre. It's, um, off of Napa Junction Road, um, next to Walmart. Um, so if you think about, you know, Walmart, when you, on Napa Junction Road, you go a little further past the parking lot. It's the kind of lot there with two, a single story homes. Uh, and that's a proposal for, uh, twenty apartments, uh, and some office space. So it's kind of a little niche project. It's kind of neat, um, to see. And, um, the application was submitted back in twenty twenty-one. The applicant put it on hold for about six months and they've come back with some new, um, ideas for it. So it's, it's coming along, but it's a, a nice little unusual project for us. Um, we have, uh, see, the, uh, building code update. Um, this is, uh, once every three years, uh, and, um, the city council on Tuesday approved a second reading. Um, it'll be effective, um, in time for January first, when the new, new building codes take effect throughout the state. So, um, that's, um, kind of a little milestone there, which is nice to see. Um, coming up in January, um, staff, uh, presents to the city council, um, an update on our cannabis businesses. Um, and so, um, that's scheduled for January seventeenth. And, um, if I could scoop it, we have, uh, one business that's moving forward off of Dodcord and two, um, are still languishing and trying to sort out, uh, where they'll be. And, and then one has a dispute with the property owner. So it's not a lot different than it was a year ago. So, um, council doesn't mind me scooping the, uh, update for you. Um, we reached another milestone, um, earlier this week. Uh, our housing element was sent to the State Department of Housing Community Development. Thank you for participating with the council on October eighteenth on a workshop. And so it's now in the capable hands of the state housing community development. So they have ninety days. Um, I would consider success a letter that has fifteen or fewer pages. Uh, most cities get a very extensive letter, but we have a lot going for us because, uh, already planning for future growth in the city. I'm hoping H C likes that. Um, and then speaking of housing, um, our building inspector just this afternoon informed me that he has approved, um, for the opening of, um, model homes, first ones, in Watson Ranch. Um, this is a subdivision that's up the end of Summerwood. And, uh, so that's a nice, a nice milestone. Um, and, um, so those are, oh, and then another thing coming up in the new year. Um, based upon our conversation that we had also, uh, with the council on October eighteenth. Your staff is going to be bringing in the new year, an update to our public hearing notice requirements to widen our, um, uh, notice radius that receives the, the paper notifications. Um, we've already implemented one of the recommendations and we did that for Chicken Guy, um, where we have our Gov Delivery Distribution List, which is very, very broad. And so, um, uh, we put that on, on a governed Gov Delivery for the, uh, application submittal and, um, got, got more comments than we normally do. So that's, um, pretty nice to see. And then finally, I just got to say, you know, with all of the planning commission applications we have, it's, it's clear that it's cool to be on the planning commission. No question about that. And, and you probably would agree, it's kind of fun too. And that's my update for you today.
Vice Chair Wong.
Um, thank you, Chairman Lari. Well, thank you, Director Cooper, for the report. It's always great to hear what's happening in our city. I had a question. When do you think, um, Chicken, the Chicken Guy application may come to our little forum here?
Hmm. Um, we had a, a, a really good first review and, uh, also a good response from the applicant. I know in meetings we've had since then, a lot of the comments were discussed and, uh, a lot of the issues that we raised, the applicant understood them, was willing to make some modifications. So I'm kind of hoping that after we get the resubmittal, it'll be pretty close to being brought back to the, to the planning commission. Hopefully in January is my hope.
Okay, excellent. And I was just curious, I kee- I looked for Oath Hill on our active list, but I didn't see anything. And I know you explained there was this kind of phase where they kind of drop off, but I thought maybe it's my, give us an update if there is one.
Um, the applicant does intend to begin grading soon. Um, and, and so that should be happening very, very soon. I believe the grading permits are all permitted and ready to go, um, weather permitting.
Thank you.
I was wondering when Circle K is gonna be, um, operating. It looks like a lot of progress has been made.
Yeah, it's just outside of my office, so I get to watch it every day. Um, and I've got to say, it's, it's, this is going to be the nicest looking Circle K in the world. No question. Um, but, um, they are apparently having a little trouble, um, getting electrical service from P G and E. Hmm. That has really delayed their progress. It's, it's the critical path to them opening. So, um, I, I, I think, um, the guess is sometime in the new year.
Okay.
Well, I noticed the car wash withdrew their application. Did they give you a reason why?
Um, I haven't talked to them personally, so I, I, I don't know the, the actual reason. Um, but I have a suspect that one of the really critical issues having to do with, um, using recycled water only. I mean, that was something they explained. It's like, oh, well, you know, our quality, and I have no doubt they're true, um, needed potable water. And that just wasn't something that, um, our ordinances would have allowed, uh, the site. So I think that may be a, a miscommunication somewhere along the way that was, that was made clear through the workshop. And, and, you know, if, if there's something that is important to hear, um, I really want our applicants to know what it is, good or bad, because it's not something I, that we want to see happen at the end of a process. We want to front end whatever it is there to be told. I want, I want people to know that upfront. And then they can make up their mind what they want to do from there. So thank you for, for having that workshop and, um.
Important, important, especially giving the stage route with water, especially here in the city, you know, and just everything going on. It, it, I think it was a good opportunity. Yeah.
Thank you. Any, uh, commissioner items?
Well, I don't think we'll be having a meeting in December, so this is the last one, I think, of the calendar year.
Oh.
And I know that we're at the end of some terms, perhaps.
What?
Um, some of you might be reappointed. Who knows? It was a big field. But I, I want to say just how much I've enjoyed, uh, working with all of you this year, whether you're, you know, up for renewal or not. It's a really great, um, group to work with and I'm, I deeply appreciate the time that you take to go through and consider all of these applications with the level of detail that you do. And, um, I'm, I'm enormously grateful.
Well, thanks, Brett. Uh, I've learned so much from you and from all of you. I, cause I'm not reapplying, so this then is my last meeting. So, um, so, and thank you, Nicole, for all your support. You're always in the background helping. And, uh, and Brent, just all your, your leadership and guidance, be you and William. But, um, this has been, uh, a real honor and, and pleasure and a learning experience. And I'll be checking in online and coming in person, uh, once that starts happening regular. So you'll see me around. Thank you.
Well, Tyron, I know you were, you've been very helpful to me during my first, you know, I guess my first four years. I remember you talked with me even before I applied and, you know, and I, I did reapply, so we'll wait to see what happens. But I have enjoyed the four years and Brent, it was definitely, as you said, if you want to know what's happening, come to Planning Commission. I always stress to so many people who expressed to me their opinions about development and how did this or that happen? I'm like, you gotta come to Planning Commission. That's where it's all happening. Um, I, I always try and share with people, they don't realize what an opportunity they are giving up by not coming to Planning Commission meetings, city council meetings, and you know, and other city meetings where, you know, residents can give input. So it has been a very good four years and I definitely learned a lot. Yeah. And hopefully I'll see you guys in January, but we'll see.
Yes, Commissioner Goff and I are stand put, so.
Don't hang it on.
Yeah.
Hang in there. Keep doing the good work.
It's definitely a pleasure. Uh, we will see you in the, uh, council, the Lex, uh, Lex for planning commission. But always a pleasure being part of all the conversations and just knowing the growth and the strength that, uh, our residents have, our community has and kind of where we're taking community or the, the city, um, you know, and kind of being responsible in the development and the continuous growth and diversity, um, changes that we see, um, not just in American Canyon, but also in our county and worldwide. I enjoy working with you all. Uh, with that, um, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Everybody have a safe weekend following into the holidays, um, and we will be again in twenty twenty-three.
Happy holidays.
Your holidays.
Holidays, happy new year. Bye.